Good evening. I would like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. The next meeting, the next regular Board of Education meeting is on Tuesday, February 25th at 7:30 PM here in the Board Meeting Room. I'll begin with the Chairperson's Report. While we're always excited to celebrate the beginning of the school year in August, the budget process is another form of beginning. Tonight, we talk about the dollars that support our students. Their learning, dollars that support the staff who work with them, and all of the many other items that together make the Darien School System that we are so proud of. Tonight, at the end of this meeting, the Board of Education will vote on the budget for fiscal year 2026. For a little context as we begin this discussion, the Superintendent's Budget contains a number of items the Board hopes to see implemented in the coming year. A look at the middle school and its facility, play-based learning, additional professional learning for staff, psychology work, and teen talk at Middlesex. Recently, our priorities have included staff recruitment and retention. Our previous two contracts have had relatively high contractual settlements. We're happy to support staff and their salaries. Safety and security. We've added mental health and security personnel and services. Student services, another longer-term major focus in recent years. This has included special education personnel and tuition, additional assistant principals, additional psychologists and school counselors. Facilities. We have a capital plan. You see those numbers in the Board of Ed budget. But the numbers you don't see are the ones, are the debt service in $260 million in construction costs for Oxridge and Hinley Homes and Royal. And as I mentioned, our middle school will need renovation in the near term. Recently, there's been a lot of talk about inflation. In reality, the Board of Education budget is mostly driven by contractual settlements. It is not largely driven by inflation. There's a few numbers that are up and down. It's certainly not exempt from inflation, and inflation is embedded somewhat in those contractual settlements. There's an increase in transportation. A lot of that has to do with driver shortages. That's not so much inflation-driven as post-COVID. A lot of drivers left the profession, and there have been less. Where we do really see inflation and where you saw it was in HHR. Those numbers went up because the cost of construction, labor, and materials went up quickly over the period of time between when we started the project and when we actually went out to bid. Our 10-year average for yearly budget increases is 2.72%. About three years ago, budget numbers started to trend higher in the mid-3s to low-4s. And last year, our budgetary increase was 4.73%. We also during that year applied to the Board of Finance for three additional appropriations, $775,000 for vehicles so that we could lower our transportation costs at a rate of approximately $1 million a year, $1 million for additional security enhancements to a number of our school buildings, and $181 for fiscal year '24 for differences in special education costs and reimbursement. So with costs up and a lot of different needs, we continue to have conversations about how to best spend our dollars. We know going into this year that our community and our board continue to value high educational quality and a high level of service and support. We are experiencing ahistorical cost increases, and this is not a one-year problem. Next year is projected to start at 511, the following 4.46, and the following 4.34. Costs that have gone up are unlikely to come down over the next couple of years without external intervention such as state aid or regulation. We, as I mentioned last week, are, we are excited to hear that there's hopefully some respite coming in special education, but that's not until fiscal year '27. Additionally, some of our cost categories are likely to continue to increase. There's been limited room for investment for a number of years. We've mostly invested in emergencies or things that are more limited in scope. And Darien is not unique. Budgets in communities around us are impacted by the same or similar cost increases. Like us, most other Dergays are reviewing budgets in the mid-to-high fours. So with that as a backdrop, we are endeavoring to best support the needs of all of our students, all of our staff, all of the things that they need to make that work, and all of the buildings that they all work and live in. Not permanently. Okay. With that, I will move to public comment. We've heard quite a bit from the public over the coming, I guess, about a month. Thank you to everyone who's engaged with us, shared their thoughts and feelings. We've heard from parents. We've heard from a couple of students. We've heard from various members of faculty. We are listening. We thank everyone for speaking. There's been quite a bit of input that's been helpful to us as we've been going through the deliberation process and that we will continue to go through this evening. Cass has the instructions.
If anybody in person or online would like to participate in public comment, please approach the podium or use the raised hand icon and wait to be recognized. Once recognized, please state your name and address for the record, and note that you have up to three minutes to comment.
Good evening. My name is Paula Blakely, and I'm the 13-year Principal of Holmes Elementary School and the Co-President of the Darien Administrator Association. I see it as my calling to advocate for the children and families with whom I work. All of the principals, assistant principals, department chairs, and directors are also here due to this same calling. We love the children and families we support, and we want to ensure that there are no cuts to the positions or programs required to meet their needs. We want to start by thanking you, each of you, for all of the support that you have provided to the children of Darien over the years. Your role requires a great deal of time studying the challenges faced by our district and working to find ways to overcome those challenges in order to ensure that the needs of our children on that-
Can you imagine if you were on the Zoom?
As part of this work, we understand that you must look carefully at every aspect of the budget in order to ensure that we are being as efficient and fiscally responsible as possible. Yet, the most essential responsibility of this board is to approve a budget that reflects the needs of the district. As you are aware, in order to simply maintain the quality of services that currently exist, the Board of Education must send a budget to the Board of Finance that requires an increase over the suggested guidelines. While we understand that this increase is above the guidelines that were developed as part of a tax strategy, those are simply guidelines, and they were developed prior to reviewing student needs through the budget process. Many parents, students, teachers, staff members, residents, and even RTM members have spoken at Board of Ed meetings and written a plethora of emails, all asking you to fund the budget at the levels needed to maintain our current structures and services and not to cut positions or programs. The town of Darien is not in a financial crisis and does have the ability to comfortably fund a budget that maintains the level of excellence our children deserve. Your administrative team is here to support you in honoring the pleas of your constituencies as you advocate for the students of Darien. We are collectively imploring you to vote to fully fund a budget that does not require any cuts to existing positions or programs. Our children and our community count on you to advocate for them, and together, as students, parents, community members, educators, and the board, we can make this happen. We know that you share these same goals. Thank you for all that you do.
Good evening. My name is Scott McCarthy, and I'm proud to be serving in my 10th year as a Special Education Administrator here in Darien and as Co-President of the Darien Administrator Association. In the winter of the 2016-2017 school year, the Darien Board of Education reviewed a proposal to evolve an antiquated and disjointed model of teacher curriculum leadership into a state-of-the-art model that could achieve 6 through 12 vertical curriculum alignment and the ability of curriculum experts to oversee the supervision and instruction of content area teachers. The previous model, which was evaluated not to be working by the administration, utilized 12 teacher leaders, about half of which had minimal release time. While distributed leadership models can be effective, this model was far from effective. The teacher leaders did not oversee the screening, interviewing, hiring, coaching, supervising, evaluating, or awarding of tenure to our teachers. The teacher leaders could never actually engage in system leadership, strategic planning, or curriculum alignment since they could not even meet together at the same time, given their schedules and the need to be available to their own students. And they could not effectively support their own teachers or even reliably see every teacher within their department actually teach as they themselves were teaching a majority of the day. The Board considered this information carefully through numerous presentations. In the end, the Board voted in 2017 to evolve these 12 positions into full-time curriculum department chairs, a vote that has allowed this district to stay ahead of the curriculum curve and maintain our status as the preeminent K-12 educational institution in Fairfield County. We understand that rising healthcare and personnel costs in the context of an inflationary environment make your work extremely challenging. We also understand that our collective obligation is to recommend a budget based on student need, not a tax strategy. As your district leaders, we embrace innovation, but not regression. And we believe that the district will regret the decision to regress to an inferior model with inferior outcomes for students. Thus, we implore you not to make changes to leadership structure of our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in person?
Hello, Laura Pesh Gray. I am just a concerned parent tonight. I also have other titles like CDSP rep for the high school and music for youth, but I'm here tonight just speaking on behalf of a parent that's concerned. When I tell people that I live in Darien, Connecticut, their first response is excellent schools. Most people in this town don't get involved, don't come to Board of Ed meetings because they trust the system. They trust Dr. Adley and all the members here that you will fight for what's in place and the systems currently in place to make our schools excellent, like the paraprofessionals, the idea program, the team structure, the small class size. They also have faith in Dr. Adley's willingness to make the right decisions and fight for us. I've also met with the Board of Finance people, who I really appreciate their time and attention. They don't feel that the changes that are at stake right now are going to affect the integrity and the excellence of our schools, but I feel differently. I've also, they also told me, if you want to pay higher taxes, go to the Board of Finance meeting and state that. I think that many of us do, and I also figured out that with the number of people in Darien and the number of households, there's about 6,978 households in Darien. If each household paid $500 extra over the course of a year, that would raise $3,489,000. That's only $41.66 a month. I know that many people would be happy to pay that and avoid the cut of our teachers and the compromise of our school system. The bottom line is that we need all of your support and so that teachers and principals are not fighting for themselves at these meetings. This is not only wrong, but demoralizing and eroding the morale and confidence of our teachers, our counselors, our parents, and the entire school and parent community. Let's make the tough decisions and fight for the benefit of our students, our teachers, our staff, our schools, and our home values. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else in person like to speak? We have one raised hand at this time. Ms. Julia Schaefer, you've been recognized and unmuted. Please note that you will have up to three minutes to comment.
Hello, my name is Julia Schaefer.
Ms. Schaefer, we cannot hear you very well. Perhaps you could turn your camera off?
1141 Hollow Tree Ridge Road. During the January 28th Board of Education meeting, Chris, is that any better?
Yes, it's better.
Is that working any better?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. On the, got it. On the January 28th Board of Education meeting, Chris Manfredonia presented a proposed gift from the Blue Wave Booster Club to the Darien Public Schools, with which the Board of Education voted unanimously to accept this generous gift. Mr. Manfredonia was asked how contemplated gifts are identified, which he answered that the school typically makes requests of the Booster Club. Can you please clarify what types of school requests are allowed to be privately funded? In making inquiries previously about funding school facilities or initiatives privately, so from a Booster Club or concerned parents, I was advised that this was not permitted, but evidently, this is not the case. Can you please clarify what the process is for schools to make additional requests moving forward that parent groups can fund? Thank you.
Ms. Schaefer will follow up with you separately.
We have no more raised hands at this time.
Alan, you'll do that follow-up. Thank you. Okay, sorry. Superintendent's Report.
Evening, everybody. Congratulations to Lauren Zhang and Bronwyn Fitzgerald, both seniors at the high school. They were selected as a candidate for 2025 United States Presidential Scholarship Program, which recognizes an academic project, academic achievement, and have scored exceptionally well on SAP or the ACT. The middle school, fifth grade and sixth grade, parent orientation in Cricklin event is tomorrow at that auditorium. And all fifth and sixth grade parents are invited, obviously through the middle school administration staff. Thank you. Thanks to the Darien Music Parents Association, and to those who are represented this evening for sponsoring the Blues and Beyond event at the high school in recognition of Black History Month. Beginning Strands had a few arts comments this evening, but the Beginning Spring Showcases are taking place this week at our elementary schools. Families have an opportunity to see our young musicians in action before their larger spring concerts. I am planning a superintendent, there's our two students there that just popped up, Lauren and Bronwyn, so congratulations to them. I'm planning a superintendent community conversation on February 27th. And that will take place in partnership with the time in the First Electments Office. And the purpose of that will be to discuss antisemitism and hate speech, and it'll be facilitated by the Anti-Democracy League. A notice will go out to all parents, inviting all parents and anybody who's interested in participating in that. Thank you very much. Good luck to the boys and girls hockey teams who will be competing in the FCX playoffs after the winter break. We also have the second, this is the second annual tenor and bass showcase, an opportunity for our students in grades four through 12 to perform at the high school. Tickets are online, and that should be a fun event for our young people. And just a wee reminder that the 308 Les Mis tickets are on sale already, so get them while you can. That's March 13th. The committee at the high school continues to meet and developing cell phone protocols for the high school, following up with some educational opportunities for parents and students, and also planning for different events through the spring term. Just a reminder that schools are closed next week, and it closes on February 14th while the staff engages in professional development. There is a finance committee meeting on Thursday for those members of the finance committee. Thank you.
February 14th or February 24th?
24th. Did I say 14th?
You did. Thank you, Joanna. Yes.
Appreciate you listening.
Student representative reports, Brenna.
Good evening. It's been a very relaxed, very enjoyable last few weeks of classes before we move into our February recess. As Dr. Adley mentioned, tickets for Les Mis are officially on sale. Be sure to keep your eyes peeled and get the best seats before they go. We wish Ryan the best of luck. He is at the final regular season wrestling meet, and we wish our wrestling team best of luck and performance as well. We will have our Jazz Jamboree concert on February 28th. And we also want to congratulate the Pan Asian American Student Union, who just recently celebrated their first annual Korean New Year celebration.
Thank you, Brenna. Approval of the minutes. We have a motion to approve the following minutes of the special meeting held on January 28th, 2025, minutes of the regular meeting held on January 28th, 2025, and minutes of the special meeting held on February 4th, 2025. Sarah, seconded by John. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Board Committee reports. I don't think we have any. All right. Further discussion and action on the proposed Board of Education fiscal year '26. All right. As we begin this portion of the meeting, we'll first address any outstanding board member questions from the list the administration has been maintaining. Rich, this format of doing the list has been really helpful. Thank you. Following that, we'll discuss any additions or subtractions to the Superintendent's Proposed Budget. We'll follow a similar amendment and voting process as we did for the Board of Education budget last May. Specifically, after addressing questions, I will move the budget proposal as circulated and posted, and we will then consider amendments. I'll walk through that in a little bit more detail. First, we'll go to the questions. Any questions on the memo that Alan and the administrative team have been working on? Yes, Joanna?
I have a bunch.
Okay.
But let's start with question 25. The, what is the difference between a sign up and a participant? We've had some emails from parents and teachers about the number of students that do attend the after-school intramurals in Middlesex. And then what does the $40,000 approximately cover? Is that just teacher stipends or?
So according to Chris Manfredonia, we do get a lot of people who sign up and then ultimately don't show. So there's a number of, like, intramurals. So there's, I think, volleyball and things like that. So it's about 20 per sport. And so the money is $2,500 for things, so like, equipment, and then the rest are salaries.
Robin?
Just to follow up to that, what is the current enrollment in the Middlesex intramurals program?
So it's about 20 participants.
20 participants total?
Per sport. So there are some duplicate kids who might play more than one, but according to Chris, it's about 20 per sport.
And then is it seasonal? Is that why there's 109 in them?
No, so 109 is who we had necessarily sign up, but then again, we don't have a lot of people who always show up. And so it's like, it might be 20 for sport one, 20 for sport two, and then 20 for sport three, for example.
Sorry, are those sports running concurrently or are they running seasonally?
So some run concurrently, and then some run seasonal.
Okay.
So it's not all, let's say, in the fall. It is split between the spring, but there's more than one sport per season.
Okay. Go ahead.
Just one follow-up. And year-to-date, we've spent about $8,000, at least based on what's in the budget book. But the budget for the full year, for this coming year, would be $42,000. Can you explain? Are there just not a lot of fall sports that happen? Or is the bulk of the cost in the spring?
Historically, we've spent close to that 40. It's fluctuated depending on the number of students who participate, anywhere between 30 and sometimes a little over 40. Participation is lower this year compared to last year, which is why the numbers are lower. But we do have more sports in the spring.
Thank you.
Who else has questions? Joanna?
The question 70.
Question number, Joanna?
Question number 70, 7-0. These different consultants that are listed, are these listed as because they're the people that we use this year, and they're like placeholders for next year? Or are these people were already contractually obligated to have come back next year?
Oh, and these are, these are the ones that we have planned for, for next year.
Okay.
But they're not contractually obligated, or they are?
So it depends on the consultant. So the medical advisor, for example, you have to have by state law. If, for the insurance consultant, if you want to go to market, you have to have an insurance consultant. The ADL, for example, we did do this year and is in the budget for, again, next year. Multisensory reading, I think, is for next year, which is sherpas.
Thank you.
Okay, Joanna?
Can we expound upon what each of those consultants do? It sounds like some of them are requirements per state, but what about the other ones?
Amy, you can talk about the literacy consultants and fairly about multisensory.
Thank you for the question. So the literacy consultant, as indicated in the response provided by administration, is to support our work with MTSS Tier One. Also, as you know, we're thinking about our revision to curriculum next year. We have significant work to do as we consider shifting curricular resources, and we see how all of that plays out. So a literacy consultant would support administration and district staff in that work. Ellen Tuckner has been also working with the elementary level, doing similar work with MTSS and thinking about assessment and data collection and use of data for student outcomes. Holly Clark, as listed, she was actually a speaker for Convocation the year prior, but she's also doing work in district on the AI front.
Can you go back to Ellen? You said collecting student data. What's that?
Like AmesWeb data, universal screeners that we collect anyway, academic data, student performance data. And she's working with us to analyze data and think about supporting small groups in the classroom and working with teams at each of the schools. So it's school-based support to advance student learning outcomes.
I'll pick up on the AmesWeb data, if that's okay, and move on to the multisensory reading. Just to add to that, Amy, on the data for AmesWeb, also how it informs instruction. So if we look at error analysis or look at logs of how students performed on those assessments, it can inform instruction as well. So looking at an error log as well and error data. For the, for the multisensory reading, for the $40,000, that's in our budget in line RC 24. We spoke several times over the year of how we're looking at that. We're looking at that with, looking at levels for both PAF and looking at Wilson reading systems, as well as some OG work. So we're in the process of interviewing different people who would work with us. We don't have a candidate yet. They're very hard to come by in terms of especially fellows of looking at that. So we're working with some of our consultants. Kristin Bisselman is one of them we've been working with until we come to the board with who the actual consultant will be and how we'll be using those reading systems.
So, sorry, the multisensory reading consultant is like a placeholder for someone that you're coming to start to develop, maybe something like New Canons Literacy Academy, but our own version of what that looks like?
Yes.
Thank you.
But so the role of that person, it sounds like, is sort of tied to curriculum. Is that the way to think about it?
Well, tied to literacy and looking at multisensory reading. So we're looking at our reading programs and how our reading programs meet the needs of our students.
So curriculum within English, is that?
Well, we're looking at phonology, morphology, orthography, looking at the different aspects and acquisition of reading skills, especially focusing on K through 5.
Robin?
Just to follow up to that, if a consultant like this would be doing work on those skills for K through 5, would that work also be then available to general education students? Or is this only for the students that currently have IEPs that are served by the RC 24?
We're looking for, starting with our special education teachers and training them in this methodology to have the opportunity, similar to an academy, which was. Children within the academy also go maybe 45 minutes or 60 minutes a day, but it's by highly skilled, we'll call them technicians, but they're really reading specialists. But also working with general ed, because the population also, and Amy's been part of this conversation and looking and exploring it, would also be for general education as well.
Thank you.
Additional questions?
I know, I've made this comment during our curriculum meetings, but I think it'd be helpful to understand. Maybe, we don't have the right people to figure this out, but if we're, if we're making an investment in that sort of stuff, I would, I would think that there's going to be some benefit on the specialized side, where there's not going to be as much. Maybe it solves some of the dyslexia problems that we have that are pervasive throughout elementary school. Is it going to solve some of that? Is there a return on that investment that we're actually getting? Maybe not next year, but at some point in the future. I think understanding that would be really helpful.
And we'll be, we'll be efficient and we'll be clear in informing the board as to what we're doing and the population that we're addressing, which would be all learners in the acquisition of reading.
Dave?
Thank you. So we have question 117. I'd sent an email in back on Sunday, the 2nd, so I guess nine days ago, six working days ago, asked for two separate tables, one each for SEL and one for DEI, going by RC detailing the total costs for each of these items. What I got back was an amalgamated of both SEL and DEI together. Shows we spent over $4 million in district on these two things, but I can't tell which is to SEL and which is to DEI. So my question, Alan, is why in nine calendar days, six business days,[1761.40] So my question, Alan, is why in nine calendar days, six business days, were you unable to get this out to a board member who has to vote tonight?
So we, we did the best we can to be inclusive of all the categories that addresses SEL and DEI. We actually read it as SEL and DEI combined.
Well, if you read the email, it's very clear that there's two separate things. It's written out in two separate lines. I don't know how it could be any more clear. So is this willful or, or is this just an accident? You were unable to provide a board member information request in nine days before he had to vote?
Respectfully, I'll answer your question. No one's trying to be evasive or otherwise. We're trying to be actually more inclusive, inclusive of it.
Do you think this is acceptable?
But I'm sure if you, if this is the nature of where we're going to start some of these questions. We, we answered the question.
We're not starting the question now. I asked, asked it twice. I had to go back and ask for clarification, which is two tables. And what I received was not a response to that question. This is not the start.
You received a response, Mr. Bryant.
Okay. So the response is not responsive to what you were looking for?
That's correct.
Understood. Okay.
I would point out though, that this was here last week. We, we responded to it last week. If it's at the table last week and if there was, if there was any questions, this board was asked, is there any questions? And not one person spoke up. This was answered in last week's table, so.
Thank you.
It was responded in time for you.
So, so this is acceptable?
Okay. All right. Point taken.
I have other questions, but I actually did have a question on 117.
Yes.
It's my understanding that when we, so when I talk about DEI, I think of it, and schools, I think of it in terms of like programming. Are they doing things in the classroom officially sent down by the district? And it's my understanding that the only DEI that we have in schools right now are passport nights done by PTOs. So, you know, I just wanted to also pull out that information so that, you know, it'd be, when you say DEI, you're talking about the inclusivity thing, like making sure all kids know that there's a place for them to go. And it would be more helpful, I think, if we discussed DEI in terms of curriculum as opposed to this like ethereal thing. Do you know what I mean? Same with, same with, you know, social emotional learning. So that was just, you know, a clarification that I was.
We, we want, we want an environment where all kids feel welcome. The, the equity is really trying to provide, which we have in our strategic plan is just to provide all our students, which I think was what we had wanted to do, with whatever they need to succeed. I mean, that's essentially what, what our definition in the district is for equity to make sure all our students succeed. And I think that would be a common goal that we all have. The SEL, the SEL part is, it's a part of what we do. It's a part of how we, how we do our work. It's a part of how our staff in general interact with our students and support our students and the skills they need. Essentially, I would see the SEL as, as the skills that the students need to acquire in order to have good mental health.
Does that answer your question, Joanna?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Brenna and then Greg.
I think one of the reasons why finding, finding discrepancies between DEI programs and SEL programs is because there's so much overlap and there's so much ambiguity between the two, because they both work towards a common goal. And that is fostering a more positive learning environment for all students. So I think maybe what would be helpful is if we could identify specific moments within or, or surrounding the classroom where we're working towards either of those programs. Because I think again, like most of the time they're taught in conjunction with one another. For SEL, you would have a lesson on empathy going throughout elementary school. And you can't tell me that that doesn't apply to diversity, equity and inclusion programs. So I think what would be most helpful is if we could specifically see what instructional time is devoted to, let's say, towards these more empathy-driven initiatives. And that would help point out where the finances are going to.
Thank you, Brenna.
Yeah, I think, I think that's actually a great idea. We should find out exactly how much time is being taken in the schools away from academics to spend on each of SEL and DEI.
So I appreciate that there's a, there's a concern about the budget vote. And I understand that, that some of the trust of this, but some of this is bigger than the.
Yeah. And so I was actually going to propose that we should add this as an agenda item.
Okay.
Master agenda item.
Okay.
For a full deep dive discussion at the board level to understand exactly what's happening for each of these.
Okay.
Including, including related to finances, et cetera, because right now I agree with Dave. I got no idea what's included. I just see a big $4 million number when we're having very challenging budget discussions.
Okay. Yes. I, it's important, I think, at the end of the budget process, there's often a number of things that come up that aren't really budget questions. So please make sure that you guys each keep track of, we'll write this one down, but keep track of, of items that need to come up in the next master agenda. I can't remember if we have it on for the 25th. But if we don't, we will have it on for the first one in March. Okay. Who's next? Joanna?
So, um, I just wanted clarification on question 74, the department chair to teacher leader model. I wasn't really involved when this happened, when the switchover went. So I was just looking at the numbers on one of the, the inserts, the click-throughs. And I just wanted some clarification on. So it says, sorry, it's, it says department chairs of teacher leaders, because that's question 70, what did I say, 74? I'm just wondering, it says stipends for DHS, for MMS, and then per teacher stipend. I just wanted to understand what that meant.
So in the DEA contract, there's language that provides supervisory stipend for teacher leaders. So for example, if you're a high school math teacher, and let's say there are 15 teachers under you and you're a teacher leader, it's a couple hundred dollars per teacher. So that's part of the stipend. And then there's like a leadership stipend, which is about $5,000. So the 20,000, where you see the fours, that 5,000 by subject, and then the other numbers, that per teacher amount.
Okay. So the idea would be that there's four different additional teachers that gets stipends?
So instead of having a department chair for English, social studies, math and science, there's a teacher leader for English, math, social studies and science, and then each would get that stipend if it was a teacher leader model. So each would get that 5,000 and then that $200 per teacher, depending on the number of teachers.
I see. So they get both.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
Can we ask questions on the spreadsheet as well or just to the Q and A? Just have a clarification question on.
Sure.
The, there's one of the software items that's, that's on the list is related to staff evaluation system. I just want to understand, like what, is that currently being used? If, if it goes away, does that mean there's no evaluation of the staff or like what, what is that?
No, it is currently being used. Mark, if you want to just talk about the plan, what we have.
Yep. So we've been using Technique LLC for staff evaluation system, but we're piling, a couple of teachers, administrators are piloting using the Google Suite, which has been used successfully in another district and will come at no cost. Amy and Barry Palmer and I have watched a demo of it. It seems to be very user friendly and will give us access to all the data we need, but there's absolutely no diminution in the evaluation of staff.
It just, if I can just add on the, this is really a software program that is holding the narrative data that is composed by the administrator and reviewed with the administrator and teacher together after an observational practice or a reflection of practice. So as Mark said, there wouldn't be any change to our process. And, and to be honest, this is one of those things that with our PDEC committee is something that we were looking at to make the technology more efficient for teachers anyway, so that the work is becoming more efficient for both the administrator and the teacher.
Other questions? Joanna?
Number, I have it written down as question 94. It says that the special education substitute line is 140,000. And I just wanted clarification that, that it's my understanding currently does not include school psychologists. And how much would that be if it did include school psychologists?
So our subs for psychologists have either been covered by the interns that we have or considered long-term subs. So they're typically out for a while. I don't believe we get daily subs for psychologists.
So if the, for instance, the intern program was no longer in effect, what will we do?
You're probably looking at someone that's like $600 a day, if you could find them. So it would be dependent on how long somebody's out. So it would be a significant cost over and above the interim program.
I would just add, I would just, just add to that, it, it's not typical that you would have psychologists unless it was a long-term absence. It's not a position that you typically fill because there's a relationship with students. And if it's for evaluations, we would assign another person to do the evaluations or contract if we needed to do that.
So if you're contracting out for evaluations, do we have an idea of how much that usually costs?
Well, they have different, they have different rates and fees. We've done it for long-term, typically not short-term. So for long-term, you're going to pay a rate. If we contracted with one provider, she actually came in to do a, a long-term replacement. It was doing the evals when we were short of token EAK. I'm not quite sure what her daily was, but I think it was like 600, 600. I don't know exactly, but it was maybe 600 and could have been 25 or something. But it was in the 600 range for a day.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. So following this, we'll move to, move on to the amendments of the budget. This, in this next portion, we look at the budget itself and discuss any additions or subtractions. As I said, we'll follow a similar amendment inverting process as we did for the Board of Education budget last May. I'm going to start the conversation by moving a budget proposal. It's in front of you guys. It's a paper in front of you. It's posted online. Amendments to amendments are permitted. So I'll make an amendment. If you'd like to change something about it, you're welcome to do that. If whether that passes or fails, then you're welcome to make other amendments, either additions or subtractions to the budget. This process allows us to prioritize. After all amendments have been considered, we then move on to vote for the full budget and then the capital budget. At that point, the budget becomes the fiscal year 26 Board of Education budget. I look forward to a productive discussion. Administration is ready to address any remaining board member questions before we vote. I'm proposing a budgetary amendment with two goals. The first is to prioritize classroom, student classroom experience, particularly for our youngest learners. It maintains two paraprofessionals in each elementary school and supplements them with one intern to support substitute coverage. The intent is to more fully support teachers and paraprofessionals by enabling the two paraprofessionals to focus on their classrooms and the intern to support the necessary substitute coverage identified during the budget process. Additionally, it keeps the same number of adults in each elementary school building. The second goal is to remove the additional fees for the non-CAC sports. The budgetary adjustment does so by reducing services in other areas that are not directly delivered to students in the classroom. It also attempts to spread the impact of any efficiencies thinly and broadly. Thank you to the members of administration and the board who have looked for these additional options as we've moved through the process here in the boardroom. So with that, I'll move to amend the budget as follows. I'm increasing RC five, RC's five through 10 elementary schools, 21603 teacher aides by 43,302.
439,000.
Forty, thank you. Decreasing RC five's elementary school, 21317 student interns by 87,500. That's two, putting two paras back in and then leaving only one intern.
Per school.
Per school. Thank you. Increasing RC 25 fixed expenses, 82003 health insurance by $404,589. And increasing RC 25 fixed expenses, 840002 FICA by 33,607. Those are tied to the parent, the employer. Those are benefits. Next, I'm decreasing RC 11 athletics, 101005 intramurals MMS by $42,050. Decreasing RC 11 athletics, 101008 intramurals elementary by 10,330. Decreasing RC 11 athletics, 101009 intramurals DHS by 4,000. And decreasing RC 11 athletics, 101002 intramurals MMS by 2,500. I'm increasing RC 11 athletics, 102014 advertising revenue by 8,000. Decreasing RC 11 athletics, 102015 participation fees by 64,244. That removes the non-CAC fees. Decreasing RC 12 maintenance, 102020 food service subsidy by 4,800. 48,000. Goodness gracious. Decreasing RC 25 fixed expenses, 52001 regular student transportation by 48,032. Increasing RC 12 maintenance, 102009 use of fields revenue by 96,420. Several items in technology, decreasing RC 15 technology, 103035 software by 32,000. Decreasing RC 15 technology, 10335 software by 16,915. Decreasing RC 15 technology, 13035 software by 12,250. Decreasing RC 15 technology, 73400 equipment by 23,750. Decreasing RC 15 technology, 73400 equipment by 150,000. Decreasing RC 15 technology, 13035 software by 17,561. Decreasing RC 15 technology, 13035 software by 21,799. Decreasing RC 16 administration, 13003, other BOE expenses by 2,500. Actually, I'm decreasing, there's two items there, again, by another 2,500 for a total of 5,000. And decreasing RC 16, 13003, other BOE expenses by another thousand. Decrease, those are the Board of Ed expenses. Decreasing RC 18 personnel, 25029 staff development by 5,500. Decreasing RC 18 personnel, 21501 principal director secretary by 56,500. Decreasing RC 24 special education, 21501 principal director secretary by 27,829. Decreasing RC 25 fixed expenses, 82003 health insurance by 12,599. Decreasing RC 25 fixed expenses, 84002 FICA by 6,451. Decreasing RC 19 curriculum, 21312 curriculum development by 30,000. Decreasing RC 19 curriculum, 25003 professional development by 15,685. Decreasing RC 19 curriculum, 25003 professional development by another 32,850. And RC 24 special education, 25003 professional development by 10,000. Decreasing RC 25 fixed expenses, 6,400 electricity by 44,000. That's to accommodate the revenue we're expecting or the, what they're, they're returning to us. That's what we're doing consistently with the town. Increasing RC 26 early learning program, 143003 ELP tuition revenue by 29,475. Decreasing RC 27 security, 21602 campus monitors by 43,817. Decreasing 25, RC 25 fixed expenses, 82003 health insurance by 14,926. Decreasing RC 25 fixed expenses, 84002 FICA by 3,352.
Sorry, I have a point, yes, clarification, just the process.
Yes. Wait, well, the motion's on the table, so we have a second. Okay. All right. Sarah. Okay. Now it opens for discussion.
Okay. So you've presented this package.
Yes.
Now we can make amendments to this package?
You can.
What if I want to make like my own package?
You can, you can do that too. You can see if this passes or fails and then you can do your own.
Okay. Let's say this passes, but there's things that we never discussed in this package. Do I still have the opportunity?
Yeah, absolutely.
Vote on them afterwards?
Absolutely. So if you have something that's related to this package, then I would discuss it here. I would make an amendment here. But if it's something independent, then following this, you absolutely have the right to make, or should amend the budget by either adding or subtracting. What we're, the, the, the add cut process is functionally amendments to the budget.
So basically you're just setting a new starting point?
Yeah. Well, I just basically added in two paras, left one intern and adjusted for the non-CAC fees, assuming that those were, those are all things that we heard from the community or board members. And then I, I've also provided the offsets. Pardon? Two paras per school. Yes. Yes, Katie.
So it sounds like you're proposing to block vote this as opposed to going line by line.
Yes, I am.
So your idea is that we would not be discussing each of these that you mentioned? It would just be a block up or down?
Well, now it's open to discussion. So now would be the time to discuss any one of these if there are questions or comments. Yes, Sarah, go ahead.
I have a question. I have no voice. Sorry. The software pieces, it would, effectively what we have done is, is put, or what I, what I see is a 10% cut of the software line. Would it be more helpful to administration to do it that way instead of the individual programs? What were the pros and cons of that?
Well, the pros and cons are just basically on the actual specific.
Well, the pros and cons are just basically on the actual specifics of the software that was chosen, the reason, the reasoning around it, the the choice for whether Zoom, which we may not be able to do these board meetings and different things, may not be able to, and that's them, we can't. And then Brain Pop, I'm not quite sure the why we focus in on that because that's one of our most most popular ones across the district. A lot of teachers are here that probably recognize that. So it would be more.
Does, I guess, does it give you more flexibility if we say to do a 10% cut or $100,000?
Yes, it definitely does, yes.
Well, technically, you have it anyway.
Right, maybe you could transfer whatever, but.
Yeah, I just was following what was identified in the sheet, but yes.
If I can just, if I can just add, Dr. Adley, that would be helpful to provide the flexibility because we should be selecting computer software, not only by looking at utilization rates, but looking at alignment to curriculum and assessments. So that that would be helpful to us.
So I'll make a motion to decrease the software line by 10% of what it is or what would the dollar amount be roughly? And I think those, all those adds up to 100,525. If I did my math right.
Can you check the math, Rich?
So Jill's motion was 100,525, 10% cuts 110,730.
Okay, so that's an additional 10,000, so.
I would, I would propose 15.
Well, hold on, there's.
All right, all right. Okay, figure out the motion.
I will second that.
Second, just a straight, a straight amendment to change, change it to a flat 10% cut. Okay, now, now that there's, now it's open for discussion and it can, it can, this can succeed or fail.
Yes, Katie. Are we discussing this amendment within the amendment?
Yes, we are.
Okay, so I want to just finish the comments that I was going to say before. I am not in favor of this process. I think we have been able to see quite quickly how messy it can get. We can have multiple sub amendments within amendments and trying to discuss them in between is going to be very confusing for everyone. Additionally, I don't think that this puts our priorities in the right place by by talking about these blocks as if they are all the top priority when really they were brought by one, at best brought by one person and at worst, you know, done in a non-public way by multiple board members. I want to come back to the responsibility of the board to have line item review. And I don't think that this package is discussing things based on merit, but simply negotiating to reach a number. And the board has a responsibility to adopt a budget that meets student and district needs, not to back into impossible guidance based on a tax strategy. And anyone who's been watching our meetings knows that there's not anything frivolous in this budget. There's nothing irresponsible. The board has gone through cutting catering, cluttering, speaking, speakers, you know, not having new initiatives. And frankly, the district is operating for the second year in a row at a deficit, and I feel that everything is in triage. And I feel very strongly that we need to return our focus to the impact on classrooms, teaching and learning, and that we need to do our responsibility of going line by line so that it's based on merit as opposed to negotiating and triaging a package or backing into a ceiling.
Well, I disagree. If board members don't want to do it this way, then we can quickly call a vote and it can succeed or fail. But I think what we found last year was that the, and we found it previous years, frankly, that the ad cut process didn't allow board members to talk about what their priorities are and were against one another. So this is an attempt to say that based on the conversation that I've heard and what I've heard at the board from the public and from the board table, that these are two priorities that the board shares and that these would probably offsets that the board would be willing to make. And so it's a starting point for us to figure out what our priorities are. I do believe that we have a responsibility to think about our overall impact. I don't think that's the same thing as backing into a number, but I do think we need to understand how much, what our budgetary increases are year over year and think responsibly. I think we're elected for that purpose, to think about how much, how many dollars we charge and how we use them. I thought that is embedded in our responsibility. To pretend that we can only build bottom up doesn't work. If we want to do that, then we should have three teachers per classroom. We should have a lot of different technology. We should have significant professional development. We should run school year round. So I think we have to be very careful not to just build bottom up. I think there's a happy medium. So I'm looking for a hybrid that puts us at a responsible budget number and gives us an opportunity to talk about priorities.
Point of clarification, Jill.
Yes.
You said a lot of very drastic things that I want to make sure is noted that you said them, that I did not, that I was very clear that this board has really scrubbed this budget and removed things down to catering, down to consultants, eliminated initiatives. So I want to reiterate what I'm saying, that I think that this board has tried very hard to be very conservative. And I believe that we are potentially at risk of impacting students. Additionally, I want to qualify your comments that you think that this amendment put forth what the board wanted. I do not want to eliminate any paras. So that is not putting forth something that I, there are multiple things in this package that I take issues with, and I think we need to discuss them all based on merit.
Then please talk about them. So I think we have right now a motion on the floor. Yes, which is, which is the the amendment. So do we want this, this, this motion has a second?
My, the motion is to amend, to decrease RC 15 technology, 10305 software.
By 10%.
By 110,350.
Yes, okay.
731, sorry.
In place of the specified.
Yes.
Would you be specific about which software?
Just in general, I just, I'm proposing a 10% cut.
She's removing the level of specificity that was in the ad cut list.
Point of clarification?
Yes, Katie.
So we've never done this before. So I'm not in favor of the amendment, and this is an amendment within the amendment. So I might be in favor of switching from cutting specific software accounts. I might, I might be in favor of the 10%. I am in favor of that over picking these specific ones, but I'm not in favor of this amendment. So how do I proceed when there is a sub amendment within a larger amendment that I do not support?
Well, this is just parliamentary procedure. There's a motion on the floor, so.
So, so Jill, how do I proceed when I, in a sub amendment that I don't support?
If you support this particular motion, the 10% decrease, then you vote for this one.
But this is not, we are not voting on this line item as a piece of the budget. We're only voting on this as a piece of an amendment.
Correct, so then you'll vote against the entire amendment when it goes up for a vote. So and then you could decide.
For anyone who is not interested in this entire amendment, we could waste a lot of time going through detailed sub amendments only for the entire amendment not to pass.
Could.
We could. Okay, so I'll, I'll call, is there any further discussion on this specific amendment? Otherwise, I'll call it for a vote. All those in favor? Okay, that is 1, 2, 3, 4, so that's Seeny, Parent, McCammon, Nelson, and Dennis. All right, all those opposed. That's Walsh, Grambling, Brown, Lublin. All right, that's five, the motion passes. Any other amendments to this? Yes, Joanna?
So I've had a lot of, I've been thinking about this a lot since you called last night.
Yes.
And like Katie, I don't think this is the appropriate way to do this, and I've expressed that to you. And like Katie, I get stuck because there are things maybe in this package that I want or don't want. But by buying into the process altogether, I feel that I am perpetuating work that was not done in public and abdicating my responsibility to vote on things in a line item way.
There is nothing in this that was not raised publicly as part of the overall process of putting.
But the way that you've put it together and made decisions about what are our priorities and aren't our priorities was not done publicly.
Well, I'm putting forward a proposal. You have it in front of you, and if you don't like it, you can vote it down. But this is the public, this is the deliberation process. You can do work on your computer at home.
This particular proposal wasn't made by one individual. This was built in collaboration outside of the table.
Well, the executive team worked together on it, yes, which is three people. Okay. All right, any further amendments to this package?
Can you just clarify what's happening with the CAC fees or non-fees?
So we've removed the non-CAC fees. There will be no fees charged subsequent, subsequent to the, no fees.
All fees have been removed.
All fees have been removed. So if we were to use any sort of fee, that would have to be a subsequent discussion.
Okay.
I would just make one other observation as it relates to the proposal, and maybe this goes to what we do after there's a vote on it, which is, the proposal doesn't address something that I brought up a year, last year's budget process, which is our admin costs versus the DURC being much higher, significantly higher. And I think that the proposal has nothing in there that addresses that. That is something that I think we as a district need to address, whether as part of this budget process or in the future. It is a continued sore thumb, in my view, in terms of the way that we are budgeting versus the rest of the district. And I think that we need to do a comprehensive review of that, either as part of this or going forward.
Okay. They haven't recommended as part of this. I do think that is, the point is taken. My personal recommendation is that that be an item that we look for. I think there's a couple of things we want to do that we've identified we need to look at over the next couple of years. Some of them are investment related, like some of the work on literacy that that was just talked about. Some of them are, and other types of programs that we might want to build, some like the bus depot, some of those things, other than that things might be more efficiency related. And we've talked about some of that here. So I do think we want to be talking a couple of years at a time going forward. So I am not recommending changes to administration right now. Right, any other discussion on this amendment? All right, with that, I'll take a motion, or sorry, I'll call it for a vote. I made a vote, I made a motion, I need to call it for a vote. All those in favor? That is John, Sarah, Jill, Robin, Dennis. Okay, all those opposed. That is Katie, Joanna, all those abstaining. That is Greg and Dave, the motion passes. All right, thank you. Now, if there are any further amendments to the budget, please propose them.
I'd like to propose putting five more paras back in the budget.
Okay, second, all right. Is there any further discussion? Yes, Katie?
Thank you. We've heard a lot of public comment, and we've received a lot of emails about paraprofessionals, but we haven't had a discussion at the board table. And this is, this is really important. Admin is suggesting that there is a problem with class coverage and that I feel that paras are taking the blame. And we do not seem to have a problem with the paraprofessional model or performance. And I think that is really important to state. It has been made very clear for anyone who didn't know prior to this budget season that our paraprofessionals are a wealth of knowledge and experience and truly invaluable to our district. I've said this before and I'll say it again, I do not believe that we should be making operational changes during budget season, and I certainly don't believe that we should be cutting invaluable professionals in order to hit a target. You know, as I said, we've received more emails and public comment than I could possibly even estimate, and it's important to notice that every single one has implored us to maintain instructional aids in the elementary schools. We have not received even a single one in opposition. Additionally, I want to say that interns are uncertain and must be replaced every single year. That's why we currently don't have them, not to mention that they are students and they require supervision from our teachers. Interns could be a great return to our district, but this is not a substitute for instructional aids. We need to think about what we are asking of our teachers, how instructional aids support them, reduce burnout, and therefore aid retention rates. Additionally, we need to ask ourselves how education in Darien has changed in recent years and how we expect it might continue to change in future years. This has not been discussed at the board table, but it's important for the public to know. I shared a document with the board yesterday that I created and compared instructional aids in Darien. Starting in the 27, 2018 school year, which is when elementary class size guidelines were implemented at current guidelines, we had 23.5 paras allocated across five elementaries based on student populations, with ratios across the five buildings ranging from 1 to 86 to 1 to 97. This year, we only have 15 paraprofessionals, and it's three at each building regardless of student population. Roya's para to student ratio based on expected enrollment at the time the budget was adopted is 1 to 112. Ox Ridge's current is 1 to 172. Reducing instructional aids to 10 next year would leave Ox Ridge with a ratio of 1 to How is this equitable? How is this the model that we want to be moving forward? How is this giving at all our elementary students the same experience that our current high school students had when they were in elementary school? Once again, we've had no discussion outside of budget. We have had no flaws found with the current para model. And yet, here we are, casting blame and eliminating a vital resource in our elementary school.
March, do we assign paras based on ratio anymore, or do we now use sections?
No, we decided not to do that because really paras were not meant to be in grades three, four, and five, so using those students as part of the ratio didn't make sense.
Okay, any other discussion of this item?
I just want to make the point that we're not casting blame. Like, my paraprofessionals are here, I value what they do, and as part of the regional super tennis budget, I recognize that, to get down to the guideline that, or get down to a guideline that the board provided, but I am no way casting blame on paraprofessionals for anything. There's some of our, as you say, Katie, there's some of our most dedicated, hardworking, loyal people.
Okay, Joanna, and then Robin.
I just wanted to point out that also, we not only received from parents and paras themselves, we also received emails from a significant number of teachers. Four out of the five buildings wrote us letters signed by the majority of the educators in that building, supporting keeping the model as it is now. And also, I would like to just, I, kids that are in high school right now had the benefit of instructional paras in a much more fluid environment than they do now. And I think even going down one more is just chipping away at something that's been chipped away at for the past six or seven years.
Which is why that year-over-year outlook really matters, because I think one of the things we've tended to do as a board is add staff, but not talk about the impact, the overall staffing mix. So we've added SSOs, we've added psychologists, we've added assistant principals, we've added what?
Psychologists.
Yeah, so I think that's one thing we need to get better at, because it does impact overall pressure on, on the, the budget when we, when we just add up and don't talk about what we want our mix to be. Go ahead, Robin.
I do want to clarify that the original budget was taking out 15 paras, and this proposal keeps 10 paras instead of cutting 15 and then adding five interns. So it's still a total of 15 adults that would be in the schools. And part of the, I think part of the intent was based on what the administration had told us, that there was about 25% of the paras time that was currently being used for teacher coverage. And with a 10 para model and five interns across all five schools, that approximates about a 25% FTE, basically, a numbers of people that could help with coverage to allow the paras to actually do the instructional aid work in the classrooms that is intended for them with that role. And so I, I would hope that this could be an effective compromise to allow the paras to really fully function in that role as opposed to covering for teachers, which really was not intended for them to do, and the student interns would be qualified to do that.
I appreciate that, but what we, I am arguing is that the substitute issue should not be solved by eliminating the number of paras we have that are in the building to do what they're supposed to do. If we want to talk about giving more support to our substitutes, I would add back in the interns and keep the 15 paras.
Okay, any further discussion?
What's the, I can't tell, what's the cost of adding the five?
What's the cost of adding the five? Whoever made the motion?
I mean, I have it down as 339,700.
339,700.
Typically during ad cut night, Rich will provide that. Is that an option for tonight?
Well, I think it's correct, right? Well, I think it's correct, right? Okay. With that, I'll, Greg, do you want to add something?
Yeah, just, just a general comment as relates to paras, which is a bit more geared towards the the general education teachers that we have. And I know I sent this via email, but just to make sure that other folks hear it. Is I do think we need to, at some point in the future, spend some time looking at what time our, our general population teachers are actually spending in the classroom. They're spending a lot of time with professional development, with administration meetings, with special education, with professional development, et cetera. And I think that we need to really understand how much time is being taken away from the classroom. And I think that the paras, and my concern with taking the paras outside of the classroom is that it's going to leave a big blank spot where our teachers are already being stretched very thin.
Just to dovetail, I'd also like to understand the absenteeism issue as well amongst the teachers. But again, in the future.
Okay. All right. With that, I'll call all those in favor. That is Walsh and Loveland. All those opposed. Oh, I'm sorry. Sarah. All those opposed. Dennis, Ceni, Nelson. All those abstaining. Brown and Grimley. Okay. The motion fails. Okay. Any other motions? Amendments to the budget people would like to make this evening? Joanna.
I would like to add back in the middle sex intramural program. I believe that was forty-something thousand? Or make a motion to add it back in?
To add that back in. Okay. Sorry. A second, Katie. Okay.
Is that just middle sex?
Just middle sex, yes. Okay. Any discussion?
So we've also heard from a lot of teachers and some parents that this is a well-utilized program. I, we talk a lot here about mental health and what is important to give kids, to help them with their mental health. We talked about the, if we, the fact that we don't have a policy on adding, cutting to varsity sports. Because some sports that kids really need, want to go and do it, and the, the coaches agree to, to to do that. This program allows kids who haven't specialized in sports, starting in kindergarten, first, second, third grade, to decide, to find out if they have an interest in it. It is inclusive of anybody, whether you do play a sport or you don't. I know there's other, there's other, I don't know if it's like a Fairfield County thing, but other schools in the state of Connecticut, their middle schools do have sports. So there's another opportunity there where they can go and they can see if they like a sport or if they're good at it, or meet other people. We don't have that model here. I've been told this because we do a lot of club sports and there wouldn't be enough people to serve on the teams in middle school. Maybe it's something that's just not done in the county. I don't know. But the fact that we do have this opportunity for kids who don't otherwise, you know, have a chance to go play sports, move their bodies, meet new people. I think taking it away would be signaling that we only support some, some, some ways of, some athletics and not all athletics.
Okay. Yes, Robin.
I, I agree. I, I think it, it does add a lot of value to our middle school students that might not even have an after-school sport. I do have a question though for Rich. Given that currently we have less participation this year around what you were saying, maybe twenty students per sport, and it's a budget of forty-two thousand. If the number of people that sign up, if we kept it and the number that sign up is less than what the forty-two thousand would be, would that end up just being a potentially unused funds that would be a transfer?
Correct.
Or, okay. And because I know the past few years it was running more at about seven, thirty-seven thousand per year roughly on an annual basis.
So over the last five years, it's gone from forty-five to a low of twenty, and the twenty was during COVID. So obviously a little skewed, but typically in that thirty to forty thousand dollar range.
But we have to fully fund it in the budget at the forty-two thousand level. And then depending on participation, it could end up being lower.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Sarah.
Is there anything precluding a private company, like Darien After School, whatever, doing this, doing a similar thing at the middle school?
They, they could.
They could.
Yeah, there's not, there's nothing precluding it per se. I know there's, there's stipends for people in the, in the contract, so that's probably the that would be a, a discussion point at least, but the other, well, I'd say other than that, that's obviously a hurdle.
If this reduction did go through, there would be potentially ways that there could be after-school programming through private partnerships.
Depending. Yep. If they'd like to do it, certainly. And if they did do it, we'd certainly utilize our, our staff would be I would think offered a lot of the positions if that was the case, but that remains undetermined.
Thank you.
Katie.
Just a point of clarification to Sarah's question. I, I believe that Darien After School runs by charging students fees. And one of the things that is special about this program is that it operates at no cost to students, which creates it to be a unique environment where students can come and go as they please without fear of missing a deadline, without fear of missing a practice for something else. It truly, I almost think that this program could be categorized under our mental health and, and physical health, well-being here. We've talked to the board for a while when it comes to things that are extracurricular about not wanting to limit participation. And I think this is an exact example of that. What is so special about this is that it gives kids the opportunity to participate and in such a casual way that it could be the type of thing where someone gets partnered with someone new in a classroom and is like, hey, you should come and stay for volleyball after school. And then they do. Like, there are not many opportunities where there are low stakes athletic and environments, social, all of that for students in this town. I think it would be a real travesty to remove this. We've heard some really inspiring stories for how it has provided exactly that, where confidence has grown for students in Darien. Additionally, I, I feel the need to again highlight the, the very low cost of, of this program. It is a very nominal amount in the grand scheme of this large budget. And, and I would be willing to continue with a theme today and make a sub-motion within a sub-motion if we need to reduce the amount budgeted for it based on lower enrollment. And if that helps make it more palatable to, to make it, you know, whether it's a thirty thousand or a forty thousand dollar line item, so be it.
Is that possible, Rich?
I mean, we would talk to Chris Banfredoni in terms of which sports in the session wouldn't run. But I mean, there's no requirement that you run, let's say, six a season. You could run one a season, two a season, three a season, whatever.
You know, I wasn't, I wasn't suggesting that we would reduce the program. I, my understanding was that the conversation at the table was that it's not always as expensive to run it as is budgeted for.
Right, because there's less participation.
It's based on particip-
Right.
On fees. So again, then we're budgeting this forty thousand as if it's going to be have twice as many kids next year.
Well, not quite twice as many, but we're, we budget it the same way we budget elementary intermurals, for example. So elementary intermurals, we budget it as if all five schools run. Typically, Holmes is the only one that has run. So with middle school intermurals, we budget it assuming kind of like that high point. And we fluctuated anywhere between, like I said, twenty and forty-five thousand dollars.
So how would you budget it for next year if you were basing it off of this year's level of enrollment?
Well, we don't have this year's full level of enrollment because there's no spring. If you were going to budget it based on, let's say, last year's enrollment, you're probably looking at about like thirty-five thousand dollars or so instead of the forty-two.
Great. So.
You want to make a motion?
I would motion to amend to reinstate intermurals, but at a thirty-five thousand dollar.
A second.
All right. Any discussion of that? I would be more interested in, I, I too read the comments. I think we're at a position where we're making choices. I would be more interested if we were willing to make some other reductions, like perhaps the incremental cost in the psychology interns.
I've got more, I've got more to come.
I know, I know, but.
Just a point of order. We got an amendment and a sub.
Okay, so an amendment is to the thirty-five thousand. It would be for thirty-five thousand. It's not
Thirty-five, you said?
Thirty-five would be the new budgeted number that we'd be discussing. So all those in favor of just discussing thirty-five thousand. Just discuss, yeah. So that's Sarah, Jill, Robin, Katie.
Yeah, this is a vote.
This is a vote.
On the amendment.
Yes.
Yes, to make it thirty-five thousand.
Make it thirty-five thousand.
Yes.
Yeah.
Correct. I'm, I'm counting and Greg and Joanna. All those opposed. John, all those abstaining. Dave and Dennis, were you opposed or? You were opposed. Okay. Okay, so now we're talking about a thirty-five thousand dollar line item. Dennis, yes.
So going back to Sarah's point about private, can, can this be done by the Blue Wave Booster Club? Or other athletic-supporting vehicles?
I have, yeah, right. I haven't reached out to them. They may or may not, but I haven't, I honestly haven't reached out to them.
It's more, it's more, it's more of a question, not, not would they, but could they?
I would have, potentially, but I would actually have to ask if they have the capacity to do that. I think they probably would because there's used boards in the afternoon, but that's, that's, we've got to have an assumption I'm making, but.
Dennis, point of clarification, you just named them, but there's other, any other group, I'm assuming.
Understood, but, but it's just a question of can, you know, Sarah said private. I mean, I guess they're private as well, but I guess the question for me is, is this a contractual part where, where outside groups can't donate? Or can any, can, because it's extracurricular, can an outside group donate?
Donate?
Technically.
Can they fund it?
Fund, fund, fund.
Well, we'd still have to work through some some contractual matters to make a determination. If that all played out, they could. With the board's approval, they could do that, but we certainly would have to work through some contractual matters first.
Any other comments? Yes, Katie.
I would just say that Dennis, while I am certainly not opposed to partnering with the community to ensure opportunities for our students, I would just say that, given the timeliness of this, I hope that we're able to retain this program tonight and, and look for future partnerships that take more time to develop as we go.
All right. Dennis.
Sorry, just, this is not really a point on this, but it's just a point on the overall budget. Just so I can follow along, I think it would help me from being remote that I don't see, can't see the screen. So I have a, an increase of four point nine zero currently, and it's, and I think we should kind of talk as to where what percentages these things bring to the budget as well.
The screen's not dynamic. We're seeing the same, it's not being updated here.
Okay.
It's just a snapshot.
But maybe we should kind of talk in this term of where we are and what these add to or, or take away from the budget. Just my point.
Richard, are you doing live there?
So you're still at four point nine? If the motion for the thirty-five thousand dollar budget, you'd still be at four point nine.
Four point nine oh.
Yep.
Yeah, because I reduced that software a little bit more.
Okay. Okay. All right. Yes, Greg?
I'd like to propose to eliminate Brain Pop.
Hold on.
Let's finish on the, on the intermurals. Yeah.
Oh, I thought we were done.
No, no, no.
We've called a vote.
We called a vote for the thirty-five thousand.
All right.
It's amended.
All right. So all those, all those in favor of funding this at thirty-five thousand.
Which keeps it at a five.
Which keeps it set at four point oh. Four point nine oh. Joanna, Greg, Katie, Robin, Jill, Sarah.
And Dennis.
Dennis, staying at four point nine.
Opposed.
John is two. Are you opposed or yes?
I'm opposed.
Opposed. Did I get everyone?
Yep.
Okay. All right.
No.
Any other amendments? Greg, you're up.
That's right. I thought we had already voted. I'd like to propose to eliminate Brain Pop.
Okay. Any discussion?
Do, do we, okay, I'm confused because I didn't vote on the amendment that Sarah made to the amendment, but did we already decide to reduce the, ours, that, that line item by ten percent?
Yes.
So this would be in addition to that?
Yes.
Why Brain Pop? Or is that, or maybe the question is?
There's a couple of things that are specific that I think should be in there.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
I think there's a couple items. Well, we'll, we'll start with Brain Pop.
So. Okay, because in their questions, they did say that the reason they use it is because if they didn't, they would have, it would incur more expenses to backfill in when you take away, when you take away that program. So there would be other expenses incurred. I don't know if it would be an even swap, but is that correct?
Could you just talk about that?
Sure. So there would be potentially curriculum writing expenses incurred. That's why we referenced that in the response, administrative response. The other thing I would just point out is these instructional software pieces and that, resources that our staff use, they are aligned to the curriculum. And this is one of the most utilized resources in the district. So I think it's very important that we rely upon the expertise of our teachers. Also in their planning and implementation of instruction to decide what resources we need to help students achieve learning outcomes. So that's just something that's really important to think about. We're hearing from our teachers that this is a heavily utilized support. We see it in usage rates. We know where it's aligned to the curriculum. And those things are all very important to consider in this conversation.
May I, may I just ask just, just like specifically why it is that one, Greg? Just Brent, like why, why you picked that one?
Yeah, sure. My understanding is that there's a lot of like political messaging within Brain Pop for our elementary school kids.
Right now.
Okay.
Brain Pop is Tim and Moby, Robot and unnamed protagonist. And a lot of it deals with science and mathematics and sometimes history. In my experience, sometimes the content could have been older, but I'm not really sure where the fallacies are within Brain Pop, if we're using it as a tool to supplement science or history. But perhaps there can be ways that teachers could outsource that same Brain Pop content. I mean, I'm sure it's been re-uploaded in ways and I'm sure it's been made more accessible and perhaps more affordable.
Thank you. Okay. All those in favor?
What are we voting for?
Brain Pop.
Brain Pop.
Cutting brain.
Eliminating.
All right, that's Greg and Dave. All those opposed. That's Joanna, Katie, Robin, Jill, Sarah, John. Okay.
Dennis.
And Dennis. All right. What else?
Eliminate Zoom.
Okay. That's covered inside of that same category. Do you want to do it specifically?
Yeah, it's, it's
Incrementally.
Fully duplicative with Microsoft Teams.
But it could get done with the, with the hundred and ten that we already did, right?
Potential.
Okay. You just, you just want to add to it.
What's the cost of Zoom?
All right. So what's, do we have a second? Are you seconding that, Dave? Yes. The Zoom was on here.
Yeah, I guess.
And Rich, do you have it?
Seventeen five.
Seventeen five.
Seventeen five, just kidding. Thank you.
And then there were, you could do Zoom. There's Zoom that's used in the schools and there's Zoom that's used here. Is that right, Rich?
Yep.
I mean, you could keep one license for Zoom for the board room, for board meetings, I should say, and then use Microsoft Teams or Google Meet for like district meetings.
What's the cost of that one license?
For the large license, it'd be about two thousand dollars.
So you could reduce it by fifteen instead.
Yeah, I'd be fine with that.
Okay. All right. Yes, Dave?
Well, I just, a point of clarification is that the reduction doesn't have a second. So are we doing a sub within a sub? Do we need a second for that?
We need a second for that to move forward. Yes.
A second to reduce it by two thousand?
Or I think you said two.
It would go to two thousand, so it'd be
Oh, just to, just to do the board of a license. We need a second for that.
I mean, keeping in mind, we've already cut it ten percent.
Yeah.
So this is on top of the ten percent?
Okay. Okay. So Robin seconded that. Any discussion? Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor. That is Greg, Robin. All those opposed. That is Joanna, Dave, Katie, Jill, Dennis, John, Sarah. Motion fails. Okay. What else you got?
So now we're seventeen fives on the table. Yep.
Now seventeen fives on the table. Okay, thank you for that. All those in favor. Okay. Greg, Dave, Robin. All those opposed. Joanna. Katie, Dennis, Jill, John. Katie, Dennis, Jill, John, Sarah. Okay. What else? Katie?
Thank you, I would like to motion that we reduce convocation catering from six thousand to three thousand.
Okay, do I have a second? Joanna? All right, all those in favor? Oh, sorry, discussion, if you want to talk about that, yep.
I just wanted to say that I am supportive of welcoming our staff with excitement to a new year. Catering has been a, a cost across this budget that we're really trying to eliminate. So I really hope that, you know, with three thousand, you know, everyone can enjoy bagels and coffee and be excited for the school year and also reduce that line item by half.
What's that line item, Katie, please?
It's other board expenses.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, do we have a, we have a second, all those in favor? Okay, Joanna, Katie, John. All those opposed. Robin, Dave, Jill, Sarah. Anyone else? Dennis, all those abstaining, Greg. Okay. All right, what else? Dave?
So I know we're gonna have this on, once we get on the agenda, so just following this ten percent, I'm gonna propose a cut of four thirteen, five sixty eight, which is to the items listed in Alan's response to one seventeen, because I don't have more precise data.
Four thirteen, one sixty eight.
Correct.
Four thirty, nine sixty eight, sorry.
Four hundred thirteen thousand, five hundred sixty eight dollars.
And this is responsive to what?
This is the various line items laid out in the response to question one seventeen. Sorry, I mean, I can read them all out, and we could probably vote for them in minutes. Ten percent.
You, I think you'll need to read what you mean, yes, because there's more items in that.
Yeah.
What are you referring to?
In Alan's response to question one seventeen, it's right here, that's the amount we got.
Mm-hmm.
And then we laid out a number by
Mm-hmm. Twenty percent of that?
Ten.
Ten percent. Okay, do I have a second? Greg? Okay. Discussion. Okay, all, all those in favor? Okay, that is Dave and Greg and Dennis. All those opposed. Joanna, Katie, Robin, Jill, John, Sarah. Okay, motion fails. All right, what else do we have? Joanna?
I'd like to make a motion to cut the convocation speaker for seven thousand.
Okay. Do I have a second? Katie? Okay, discussion? Alan, you, you did talk to us about what that is.
Being what it is?
No, it's the person who comes, you told us.
Well, the person who's coming has spoken on different things, AI, student, student assessment. Ruler, actually, we have a different, we've had different speakers over, over the years. That's, that's basically what it is. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes. Okay. Any further discussion?
Do we? I don't know how you know, how you qualify, but do we get a sense from our staff that it's worthwhile and that your feedback is good?
I won't kick a server right here, but, but they probably like somebody else more than me, but that's a, that's an open discussion. I would say that, I think I can say confidently that the last couple that we've had have been responsive to pre-K rate through twelve. And informative, and there's board members who go to that convocation, so you have a wee sense yourself of how it's presented.
Okay, all those in favor, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, so I've been to some of these, and I still found that the time I was down the discussion or the speaker most dynamic was when Dr. Ashley was speaking. I think it's appropriate that your superintendent that leads your district is leading your district in the very first day, welcoming them back. And this is a way to save a little bit of money if we're trying to do that as much as possible.
Okay.
Well, I will always participate, like, so, just for the record.
For free?
All those in favor?
Oh, go ahead, Katie. Yeah, I just wanted to echo Joanna's comment, you know, having attended these as well, and seen the the talents of our staff on display also is kind of invigorating, you know, we have, we have musicians amongst our staff and teachers, we have drama, and I think that with some creativity, we could really develop a nice kind of showcase of our internal talent.
Remember, I asked the A president to present for us, I'm like that.
Yeah, yeah. I actually think that this is probably something, yeah, yes. Barry, you ready for some tap dancing? Might be a good thing to talk to the Reese Fund or the Harrington Funds about, if, if that's something the board wants to pursue. So. All right, all those in favor? Joanna, Greg, Dave, Katie, Jill, Sarah, John, all those opposed. All those abstaining, Robin and Dennis. Okay. All right. Yes, Dave?
Oh, I was gonna put one up.
Go ahead.
So restoring the cut to the half school security officer is various three different line items, total sixty three thousand, eight sixteen.
Okay. Okay, do I have a second? No second. Okay. Yes, Joanna?
Oh, I'm sorry, was it?
That's it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Restoring, wait, was the campus monitor taken out of the package? So I'd like
It was in the package.
It was in the, so it's no longer
It's cut.
It's cut, okay, I would like to propose adding that back in, or make an emotion to add that back in, I would at least like to have a discussion about it.
Second.
Um, so I think that we're down like, this would make the third campus monitor we're down over the past several years. And I just wanted to really understand how that affects the day-to-day safety and security of the school. I know there's an SRO there, but one of the reasons that we put SSOs in at the elementary schools was because SROs can be called away. And it's also my understanding, they have like curriculum and programs that they also work on as well, so what is the real impact of, you know, also the Oval is a open public road, you have a lot of new drivers there, I just want to get the full sense of what the real impact is, now that we would be down three from where we started a couple of years ago.
Well, I feel that this one, particularly at the high school, you'd be, you'd be a bit thinner on the ground, that that's true, because you're splitting less people, right, and that particular campus is an open campus, as you know, so we would be deferent to some of the administration and so on to be out and about more and coverage. This, at the request that was made, this was a recommendation coming from the Director of Security, who's support, who's supporting this, so I wouldn't do it if he, if he wasn't supporting it. I don't feel it's compromising the safety of our students, I don't feel that at all, and making that the recommendation. Yes, it's a wee bit thinner and we'll have to do different coverages and reassign some people and do it a little bit differently, but but we still have people at the front door, we still have people who can cover the various areas. So that, that, I mean that's the description, right?
Any further?
We still have, we still have, don't forget, we still have the model in place. The campus monitors at the front doors, and I feel that our schools are safe, as, as safe as any other schools for sure.
I mean, the campus monitor that you, we removed from Middlesex, I have to say, drop off at least in the morning, because I dropped off my own child every day last year and this year, and it is significantly more treacherous than it was. You know, with one less person, because there's no one that's necessarily standing out there every day the whole time. So, you know, knowing how crazy the Oval can get, that's why I was asking this question.
All those in favor? Joanna? All those opposed? That is John, Sarah, Jill, Dennis, Robin. Dave, Greg, all those abstaining. Katie? Okay. Motion fails. Okay, any other changes? Yes, Katie?
I'd like to make a motion to eliminate from professional development account twenty five zero zero three in the amount of seventy one hundred dollars, Holly Clark, as a consultant.
Is there a second? Greg? Okay, discussion?
Can I just get clarification on what Holly Clark does?
She's, she's an AI, she does AI, actually, she was been, she's actually been working most recently with all of our talented gifted teachers, this is their professional development. Our kids in the, in the talented gifted program are the kids who should be utilizing this and so on, so she's been working with them directly on lesson development and instruction in the classroom. I mean, we want to be on, I won't get into defending a lot of it, but you want to be on the cutting edge of some of this stuff, and, but I recognize that's what we're faced with. But those are some of the implications.
All those in favor? Greg, Dave, Katie? All those opposed? John, Sarah, Jill, Dennis, Robin? All those abstaining? Joanna? Okay. All right, anything else? Okay.
Rich, just one
Yes, Robin?
Question, where do we stand right now? What is the number we're at, Rich?
So we are, we're slightly higher, it's four point nine two or a hundred and twenty five million, seven sixty two twenty three.
How did it go up?
I had thirty instead of the thirty five for intramurals. It was, it was a cell error when the school intramurals was put back.
Okay. So what's the number?
Four point nine two or a hundred and twenty five million, seven sixty two two three.
Seven sixty two two. All right. Any other? Greg?
Just propose in a similar vein, just for discussion purposes, Ellen Tucker, 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 the consultant?
Okay, do I have a second? Dave? Okay, discussion?
Can we just get a little bit more clarification on what, what she does?
So again, she's working with school-based teams, one of the things she's working with is our school-based teams, as we think about K three literacy and strategies to support the fact that we need all students reading and being really, really strong decoders by the end of second grade. She's also supporting the MTSS process as we make the shift from SRBI to MTSS.
Is that, is that something that, because there's also a consultant in here for multisensory reading, because it seems like there's some, no?
No, her work is not in the area of multisensory reading.
Meaning that they're two separate things?
Yes. And that's a separate line item, that's the forty thousand we've asked for, the RC twenty four.
Anything else? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry, thank you for clarifying, okay, all those in favor? All those opposed? That's unanimous, thank you. Anything else? Yes, Katie?
Thank you, I just, I have one more that's similar in nature, where I have a couple of questions. I wanted to talk about the psychology interns, in light of understanding today the, the substitution rate and the difficulty there, I, I understood tonight that there's a benefit because they're in the building, because they know the people, they, they can step in in a way that, that we can't find or people even to be capable of on a day by day, so I appreciate that. However, I am curious as to what the need is for that type of coverage, the frequency, and then additionally just the program, I have never quite been able to, to feel comfortable in my understanding of whether this was a nice to have and, you know, maybe a pet project that potentially could pay dividends down the road in terms of recruitment, or whether this was, this was driven by student need. So if someone could speak a bit to those couple of issues, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Katie, I, I think we spoke last time about they have filled in from attorney leaves, they've also filled in for a leave replacement when we were short psychologists, so they do that, but that's not the primary function of them. That's an added benefit of them, and, and they can step in because they know the students, they know the teachers, they know the families. I think they also are conducting ELP screenings, I think we mentioned that last time also, which is something that really supports our youngest learners. They're also counseling missed counseling sessions, so in the number of sessions we would have had as other psych
Sorry, Shirley, I didn't catch that, could you just say it again?
They're also covering missed sessions or what would be missed sessions, so when our psychologists are either in 504 meetings or PPT meetings, they're able to continue with groups and work with students. Both students with IPs with 504 plans and general education, so I think that's a, that's something that we really value, and it stops the interruption of, of missed sessions or, or sessions that would have been missed because of those meetings and the number of meetings that are conducted. They're also doctoral level candidates, so they come highly qualified, so in addition to helping with evaluations and conducting those evaluations, I, I think they also share in their current college experience and what they're learning, so they also help with, with current understanding for other psychologists who are here. Some of our new psychologists also have the opportunity to really learn from them as peer learning. I think just because of their doctoral level status, that really helps to support all our psychologists in the district. Again, the number of, we've shown on elementary, especially of initial evaluations that are conducted, of reevals that are done and, and three-year triennials, they really help to support that, so we're able to really be current with the number of evaluations we need to conduct.
Sorry, Shirley, could you just remind me that it's for two interns, and I see that the numerical amount in the spreadsheet is sixty eight thousand, so they are paid thirty four for the entire school year? And there, and there are no health benefits or anything because they are student interns?
And twelve months.
Okay, so they're twelve months, not ten, but no benefits because they're students and, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Robin? Just a quick question, so how many, the sixty eight thousand is a cost for how many interns?
Two interns.
Okay, but the, the past year's budget included, I think it was fifty, fifty five thousand dollars, so did we have this program last year, because my understanding from the budget document is that we were adding an additional two interns for an increase of thirteen thousand, is that not correct?
So you have two in the current year's budget at fifty five, the cost of the programs go into sixty eight for two, two different interns?
So we'll still have two interns, but the cost is increasing, and we did have this program in place, but it began last year, is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Okay. If not, I will take a motion to approve an operating budget of a hundred and twenty five million, seven hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and twenty three dollars, representing a four point nine two percent increase for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year, do I have a second? That is John. All of those in favor? That is John, Sarah, Jill, Dennis, Robin, Katie, Dave, Greg, and Joanna, it's unanimous, thank you all, everyone, for the time. Yes, now we need to move on to the capital budget. If people would like to amend that budget, they can.
Sorry, amended from the additions and the ones
So if you want to do an addition, well, I don't think we'd do any additions, but if you want to subtract from the capital budget.
So there are three things from the capital budget that are on the cut list, is that
Correct. And if you want to move any of those as a, as a reduction to the budget, you're welcome to do that.
Okay.
Yes, Joanna?
I'd like to make a motion to remove the replacement of the sidewalk from our budget.
Okay, do I have a second? Katie? Okay. Opening for discussion.
Sarah? Talk about why we're doing it at the town.
Oh, Kevin's not here.
Question?
Why?
Why we do, I'll, I'll repeat it, why are we do, why are we, why is this in the school budget, not the town budget?
So Kevin did reach out to the town to see if they would do it, and the answer was no.
Is it technically their prop, I mean?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and it's technically.
So why are we covering for them?
So the sidewalk has tripping hazards.
Okay.
It's been listed in the board's budget for a couple of years.
Can I make an alternate proposal?
Yes.
Which is, Rich, if we split this out, the sidewalk versus the drain, or is this just the drain?
This is the sidewalk.
That's here.
At least here.
Oh, here, my bad. That's what the line below says, okay, which one?
Yes, Katie.
Um, Rich, could you just remind me what the line item cost was for this?
Forty, 2,000.
Thousand, yeah. I'm in favor of keeping the responsibility where it lies.
Yeah. I can appreciate that, but at this point, we're ready to go. Um, but for a bigger number, I think it's worth a longer term. There may need to be a longer term discussion. Um, okay, all those in favor of the reduction. Sarah, uh, Katie and Joanna, all those opposed. Robin, Jill, Dennis, Greg, Dave, John. Motion fails. Okay. I'll certainly take that as an item for further discussion.
We, we, we can bring it to the Board of Finance and they can.
They can move it to the other spot if they want to. Yes, they can. All right, any other amendments to the capital plan? No, okay. Um, Rich, would you please confirm the dollar amount?
Uh, so there's no change, so it's 1,139,150.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion to approve a capital budget of 1,139,150 dollars. Dennis seconded by John. All those in favor. Uh, that is unanimous. Okay. All right. Thank you all. It's a lot of work, time and lost sleep. Um, each of us cares deeply about all of these decisions. So thank you, everyone. And as I said in the beginning, we look forward to celebrating fiscal, the school year, or school year 2026 when it comes. Um, follow-up action items. We have we have a couple of agenda items that we'll look at that were mentioned this meeting and we'll bring back the agenda. I think we have a full meeting on the 25th. We'll bring back the agenda in the first meeting in March. Anything else that we are missing on the action items? Okay. Public comment.
Good evening. If anybody in person or online would like to participate in public comment, please approach the podium or use the raised hand icon. Please state your name and address for the record and note that you have up to three minutes to comment.
Uh, Crystal Hill, 300 Brookside Road, CDSP Chair. We want to thank Dr. Adley and his team and the Board of Education for all the time and energy they have given to this budget process this year. I know that you have received a high volume of parent input this season, both via email and public comment. Thank you for giving our community members the opportunity to express their viewpoints. Thank you also for passing a budget that was responsive to the concerns of parents and the larger community. Thank you for maintaining the IDEA program, for not increasing class sizes, for keeping some structure of paraprofessionals at our elementary schools. Although in full disclosure, I think there are still real concerns on our end about reducing paraeducators from three to two and the negative impact that may have on staff and students, and we will certainly be paying close attention to how that plays out at our schools next year. Thank you for understanding the importance of the mental health initiatives in place at MMS and DHS and for maintaining department chair leadership. While there still may be elements of this budget that raise concerns within our school communities, thank you for the effort put forth to balance financial constraints with passing a budget that largely meets the needs of our students and staff. However, with an overall increase of 4.92, 4.92%, this budget exceeds the Board of Finance's guidance of a 3% to 4% increase. PTOs and many parents who have advocated for this budget are prepared to continue their efforts to ensure the necessary funding is secured from both the Board of Finance and RTM and preserve the staff and programming they fought for. Not every aspect of this budget may have received unanimous, unanimous support from this board, but at this stage, it is the official Board of Education budget. Just as parents are ready to advocate for it, we hope that the administration and the Board of Education will also defend and fight for it. The work is not done. Please continue to champion a budget that upholds the high standard of education we expect and dare yield. Thank you.
Thank you.
If, anybody else in person?
Laura Pesch Gray, 11 Parsons Walk. I know the team structure has been not touched and not cut, but, um, many, several years ago, um, I was told that there's another type of team model that's that might be much less expensive. It's called the house model and it's very in line with what we do. Um, actually, it, it has students in different houses. So it sounds like a very, I have no idea. It, I looked this up today. Um, I know it was proposed many years ago, but I never really under, you know, I was, I was not here when that was proposed to the two principals ago, um, Shirley, um, for MMS. And I just thought if we could look at this model and bring the Paris back, I know you voted on this already, but if this is similar and less expensive, maybe we can, um, reevaluate the five Paris. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no raised hands at this time. Okay, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. That is Joanna, seconded by Greg.